If I have to get up, I won't put my face in front of that. Don't worry. Does that work? How you doing?
I'd like to call this meeting to order, Executive Committee meeting of the West Baton Rouge Elementary School Board, four nine twenty-four. Whatever these stands for.
The flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Shute?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
And Dr. Wong.
All right. The only item on this agenda is a community presentation with your argument letter, David.
Four members have put the letters in your packet. The letter was addressed from Ms. Clarice Lacy, Mr. Garrett Brown, Michelle Thompson, Kathy Jackson, Pastor Brown, and Augustine Hawkins. Yes, sir.
Yes, Steve.
Okay. Well, do you want to come?
Cause it's.
Yes, sir.
My name is Garrett Brown, and we, uh, we sent that employee in because of two incidents that we were concerned about. I got it, our organization, the end of Lacey people. West Baton Rouge got some calls and, uh, about. But one, I would call a hate crime. Hate crime that happened everywhere. You know, they're concerned about the ramifications of it, how it was handled. The child that, the student that, uh, it happened to. And we, we couldn't get no answers from anybody. I think I talked to the mother, she said she had been called and she had called from the, uh, maybe the, uh, this should have turned off and try to keep it out of the, keep it out of the news media. You know, and, and it just sounded like, to me, that's ludicrous. You know, for a child to be prey upon like that and adult to come on campus. And then, you know, and we don't get anything from the principal or from anybody. Now, that could have turned out real bad. Could have turned out. A lot of calls about that, uh, what the protocol, you know, when we have, uh, what about shared phone duty or, or, or the security, how, how to handle it, whether anything said to the person, the person, uh, I don't know, the lady, the parent, it was apparent to do this to another child. You know, and that, that's, that's, that's unacceptable. You know, we, we, we supposed to have something in place for something like that. I mean, you, we've heard all over the country that when it's, uh, a hate crime, usually somebody's arrested or either recommended or something. You know, so the comments just kept coming in on that. The other issue was writ, and I know I got, I was told that we can't talk about personnel issues.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. But to have our first, if I'm the only black principal, not, they call it reassignment, but it was like demotion.
No, we, really, we can't.
Okay, no, you don't have to, y'all, you don't have to say.
Well, no, sir, I'm just advising you that we cannot discuss, you know, personnel.
Okay, well, how do, how do we have, how do y'all have that? When it's done wrong, you know, uh, for this person to be told, I can't tell you why you being reassigned and demoted, that's not right. That's, that's a person's career. You're supposed to be able to tell me why are you firing me or why are you demoting me? And for her to call and say she was told that she couldn't, they didn't have to tell her that. The school was brought from a C school to a B school. And, and, and she don't get to make a year out of it. You know, you don't get the end of the year, and, and, you know, the, the PTO sent out some, some, some copy, we had some copies from the PTO where they sent stuff in to Mr. Smith. And if, if you're going to be influenced by the PTO, you can get some other organizations for you to be influenced by. You know, you, that's a decision that you and, and the boys should make when you remove somebody like that. So that, that's just two, two things that we had, we had to come up with. And we gotta do better. You know, and right is right and wrong is wrong. It don't matter what color, who it is, it's gotta be done right. You know, and I think that, that was, that was kind of awful. Students asking where the principal is. Parents asking where she is and why. You know, and we don't get to know, nobody gets to know. You know, that, that, I mean, we probably would run an organization up on the table. You know, we have, we have, you know, accountability, that's all we say. We want to, you know, say, be transparent. That, that seems right. That, that we do, even if it's not, where somebody, but we don't have a racist bone in our body. Well, when you do racist things, you ain't got to have a bone in your body to do something that's not right. And that's all we say, you know, and, uh, I just couldn't let it go, couldn't, couldn't let it go. Flower. The other way, I would be sending the same thing. You know, if that principal was white, I would send the same thing. It is wrong, but you are lying about it. So that's, that's what I want to do.
Well, that was the only item on this agenda.
Are the other people gonna get to speak? The other people that were, that sent the letters, are they gonna be able to speak as well?
Uh, I think what we had agreed to was a total of ten minutes.
Presentation from one person.
Or did you give them notice if they were gonna only get to me?
You, you're the one that emailed me and I told you.
Told you they weren't a group, and I said, you manage it however.
You emailed me six times the same letter and, and typed the names. So I, I told you it would be a ten minute presentation, because I wanted to give you all the opportunity to speak.
Just for the record, I consistently said that they were not a group, that they were individual citizens of West Baton Rouge that had issues. My only role was assisting these citizens access to this system. I didn't want them to show up passionate about these issues and not be able to discuss it, so I submitted them. In every email, I said, I'm sending this on behalf of whatever the name was. So I just want to make that very clear. And I told you that they submitted it in line with your procedures and you manage it how you want, but each of those individuals requested an opportunity to address the board in accordance with, um, so I think it would have been cool to say upfront, just in case, because these people, they're not together, they're not together. So, and I told, and I told you that over and over. I don't represent them, I don't even know them, I met this gentleman today. I don't know any of them, not one.
So is it the board's current position that they're not gonna let the other persons that had properly submitted their letters have a chance to speak?
I mean, I, I can defer to our attorney, but I, I got the letter from one person. Um, it was Ms. Greenhouse.
From my email, email address.
And, and you typed the name differently of, of six people. I'm, I'm fine with, it's gonna be a total of ten minute presentation is what I, I related to.
Two minutes per person?
Total. Are the other, are the other individuals here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. What? I mean, I'll see Ms. Lacy out there.
I'll see Augustine Hawkins is here, Pastor Brown is here, I'm not sure who are the, who the others are.
I called them six names. If y'all would like to come up together, y'all, y'all can.
If you would like to speak, you can go up and speak. Your letters were properly submitted, and if they changed the rules, they should have notified each person that had a letter that they were gonna be changing the rules. You can't uniformly notify one individual who has spoken to you and told you repeatedly that they don't speak for a group.
If the six individuals did, I have the letter to, to make a statement regarding the six bullets on the letter that were submitted to me, please come do so. Thank you. It's, uh, just.
My name is Augustine Brown. I'm a citizen of Port Allen. I'm here, my concerns are the situation with the, um. I'm a citizen of Port Allen, and I just got some concerns, uh, with the principal from the elementary school. I also got some, some concerns about Brule High with the note on the window of the, uh, young lady. We want to address that problem. We want to hear about it, we want to know about it, we want to get information about it. We don't think that child being fair, we don't think the principal counted it the right way. And in some situations, we are concerned, and if we come into the meeting, we want our boys to be heard. We don't want to just have to get on agenda, because we get out and vote for you all, and we expect to be put on agenda whenever we are here, we expect to be heard. And we're not gonna tolerate next agenda, next meeting, next whatever. No, I'm not. I've been in Port Allen all my life, I'm a alumni of Port Allen High, and I, I have some concerns. I have some concerns how the, uh, security wasn't on campus with the young lady, her mother's here, the child is scared for her life. You all need to address it. We voted for you all, we put y'all in, in different districts, and we want to hear from y'all. And it's not being fair with this principal thing, I'm just getting aboard with that. But I definitely want to know about the principal, the, the, the elementary school principal. We need some answers. We're not gonna tolerate it. We're not gonna tolerate it. It's unacceptable. And the thing that happened in Brulee, just listening to that and finding this young lady and going in the parking lot, she needs to be charged with more. She definitely needs to be charged with more. The child is fearless for her life. The young lady's son goes to that school. We don't know, we don't know what would have happened. And I also got a complaint that somebody told her, if, what can we do to make this not put, put on social media? What can you do? Authority, a high authority? Asking, what can we do, the mother, what can we do for this not to get on social media? No, we're not gonna tolerate it. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, I'm speaking on the mother. She is fearless. She has another child that goes to the school. And we want answers, we want answers.
We can give you answers on that incident as far as where it was handled by the police, but we cannot comment anything on personnel. It's just, that's the law.
What do you mean, you're gonna say how it was handled on behalf of the police? Can we talk about how it was handled on behalf of the school board? And the school, not the police, there's no, I mean, the police should speak for the police, right? And the school board should speak for the school board, right?
I can't tell you what the police charged you with.
You said you're gonna speak about what happened with the police. Can you speak about what happened with the school? What happened on the school level and what happened on the district level? Not what happened with the police? You can't speak for the police because you weren't there. We all read the incident report allegedly, you know, how that incident, but we want to know what y'all did.
The principal, I, I would like to know what the principal, when she went to the principal's office, what did he do? What did he tell this young lady? Did he, did he reach out to the mother at, um, then? What did the security do? That's my question. What did the security do then? And the mother's here, and she, you know, child told her everything that happened. And we, we're just not pleased with her.
So Mr., um, Mr. Williams is our safety and security coordinator. He was involved right after the incident. Met with the mom on Friday, March twenty-second. I can, I don't, I can't go into detail because some of the, the things are private. But, um, the, the incident was investigated. Charges were, we don't determine what the charges were. That was done by the DA's office. We gave them video evidence of the, the footage. Our officer was on, on site when it happened. Actually, his car was about thirty yards away. Uh, it was just pointing the other direction from where the event took place. Mr. Williams, um, met with the mom on Friday and again on Monday. We worked to begin our notice of banning the, the mom from campus on Friday, quoting our policy. That letter went out the following week.
Do you know the date of the letter, ma'am?
I don't.
On the letter, we have given a letter sent to the mom or just to, to the mom of the child or just to the perpetrator?
So, so part of the letter was sent to the person that was banned. So, but Mr. Williams hugged the mother on the Monday, that's the twenty-fifth, uh, to, to make her wear, and I don't want to speak more. Mr. Williams was there, he made the, he met with the mom both Friday and Monday. Nothing was tried to be covered up, covered up on this, this incident. Are there things that we would always do different in every situation? Absolutely. Would we, could we always do something better? Absolutely. This is a horrible, horrible, horrible incident. I'm a former principal of a high school, and you never, ever would, a student or my own child would ever want them, uh, have to, to read any, any information like that.
But she banned it just for this, the rest of the school year or just entirely?
It's indefinite.
But she get to go to her son's graduation?
So that's what, I don't, I don't want a back and forth, because I know when, I, I, I know in three years or however long that's gonna be, that will be a topic of conversation. I'm not, I might not be here. I mean, this might be a different, um, I can't make a promise that I'm not, it's, it's, it's far from here. It's an, so, um, the DA's office might be, we don't control the charges, but we did work in conjunction with them from the moment of this case being.
So the DA was the one that determined the charge?
Oh, yeah.
We, we, we don't determine charges.
The mom was saying that nobody, they didn't, she wasn't banned on Monday, they were still trying to figure out what was hap, gonna happen, because that was communicated to her. So can we just, I mean, can you just, I think just for like to build some, um, transparency or public confidence, what is the standard? Like, I'm not trying to, like, just, just sharing what the, the regular procedure, if it were your child, what would the procedure be?
So on Friday, uh, Mr. Williams came to my office. We pulled up, I had a stocked ban letter that I've already, I've used prior when I was a principal. However, it was in another district, so it quoted policy that was not our policy. So that letter we could not use because the policy was different. My former position, the principal banned people from the campus. Uh, we worked on that, um, Friday and the following week, because our policy reads, it was a little unclear.
Friday, which Friday? What Friday?
The twenty-second.
On Tuesday.
Really, I don't want a back and forth.
I'm just giving.
I understand, but, um, we, we worked on the letter. The policy was a little unclear, did it come from the board that banned, or did it come from the superintendent? Uh, it was clear that it did not come from the principal. So, um, Mr. Williams drafted, we, we worked together to draft that letter. And, uh, we handled it that way. He spoke with the mom on Friday, um, the morning spoke with the mom on Friday, the Sunday, and Monday. And Mr. Williams spoke with the mom on Monday and met with the mom on Friday and Monday. The DA's office controls the charges. We, uh, we don't do that.
But what is the policy, there's a thread on camp, my question is, what is the policy? And like, what policy are you even using to, to ban? Where, where was one?
I'll show you. And this is probably, I mean, this is as, as much as I knew, because I had to research it myself on how we do, um, how we do operate. So, and K, uh, public conduct on school property. And this is the, the, the policy that we quoted. This was adopted May two thousand and eleven. So examples of unacceptable conduct include, but are not a limit, lot limited to the following, using vulgar obscene language or gestures, possessing or being under the influence of any alcoholic beverages or illegal substance, possessing a weapon, fighting or otherwise striking or hurting another person, failing to obey the instructions of the security officer or, or school district, uh, employee, interfering in any with, uh, any way with an athletic or co-curricular event, or engaging in any activity which is disruptive or illegal. Fell under this policy, multiple areas.
Okay, I just got an email from Ms. Clarice Lacy. She is not here, she got stuck in traffic trying to come out of her area for something. Is it possible for me to read her email into the record?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
This comes from Ms. Clarice Lacy at, clarice.lacy@yahoo.com. The correspondence reads as follows. Tonight I am addressing, I am addressing a safety situation that occurred at Brulee High School on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I myself, as well as the general public, learned about this incident via newsroom. The evidence surrounding this incident has alarming and disturbing, to say the least. On today, I would like to address state policies and procedures as it relates to incidents that include imminent threats towards students and faculty. Let's reference the incident that occurred on March twenty-second at thirty-three a.m. where an aggressive white female began a manhunt for a young black female teenager. The reason in which manhunt is the appropriate word used to depict her actions is because this enraged woman engaged in an intensive search for another human being. The aggressor entered on the school campus after an incident of road rage occurring off premises. She then began lurking and prowling around the parking lot designated for students, where she made contact with several other innocent students, questioning them about the whereabouts of the teenage black female that drove the car in which she would later violate with no act, with other criminal acts, excuse me. The students stated they watched her continue to hunt around the parking lot until she veered off in the student parking lot, still in her enraged state, writing a vulgar, threatening and racially offensive letter to the victim and trespass on the victim's property to deliver the note. The note read, "Attention, attention bitch," all caps, "I know who you are and I will effing find you and effing car up when you don't expect it. Learn how to drive, bitch." This note was retrieved by other students who were exposed to this threatening aggressive actions of this manhunting. Today, I am questioning the actions that were taken in response to this manhunt. What safety measures, what safety measures were put in place to secure the victim, the safety of the victim? Other than they came in contact with or being a student at the school? This was a hostile situation that occurred on the school's property, while our students are the school's responsibility, yet according to the mother was handled as an everyday occurrence. How did the principal's actions line up with the policies and procedures that are in place for innocent incidences where the life of the student was threatened by another person that is connected to the school? Why wasn't a parent contacted about a, such a criminal act that involved her child as the victim? Aren't there school policies in place which address how parents must conduct themselves when on school property? According to what we have learned, the aggressor was still bringing her own strong messages were generated by our local law enforcement agency and our DA about crime and keeping our community safe in the back. Has the school board taken action, has taken affirmative actions by revising policies on fighting because and inputs of fighting on Brulee campus? What is the note? Why is it to do what was right to secure the community in the, in this incident? Do you think that people was affected by this? Well, we were and we weren't, excuse me, we were and we aren't going to tolerate the actions of criminals, principals, or school boards. I speak on behalf of those of us that are concerned, especially in the black community, where was the immediate action taken to ensure the safety of this young black girl, well-being and response to this racist, field white woman? And even more so, concern is what? If she would have made contact with the parent, the danger of this young white girl would have been in. Through the intensity of her actions and the emphasis in her note, only leads us to the, if she had a whip, a tree, a noose, what pleasure would have gotten from the use of that? What pleasure would she have gotten from the use of this procedure? And on top of it, and to top it off, there was no security in place to protect her or others. My question is, what happens now? So if you'd like to read the questions that you address them, individuals, I can just address them all.
I feel like how addressed, what our response was, um, the DA would have to address that response, the charges.
Are there any changes anticipated, um, to make the campus more secure for the vulnerable students that still are on campus for situations like this? Like in light of this, like, does this?
Specifically at Brulee High School, um, I believe additional security officers placed on duty, just, uh, and for a lot.
Is that a long-term situation?
I think so. It's a large campus.
You think you would offer more security at Brulee? You said they don't want, you think you need more security?
He's, he's not the security yet.
Well, you need security.
We do have security.
More, more.
We, uh, we have a backup security officer there that, that also supports when we need it, so there's always available two. There should be always one at least on that campus. Mr. Williams supports that, that measure.
What about a fence? Because if this is a student, from my appreciation, that is a student parking lot, and it appears that you can gain easy access to it, and a fence with many of that, and you're placing a security officer there to prepare for that, you're not a student of Brulee High School, you shouldn't be driving back there against the student parking.
So, in, in theory, that would be great. It's also the carpool parking lot. So the carpool exits at the same space, and enters at the same space, the human park, for parents who are on walk. So there was no way for our security personnel, who were stationed right there, for them to know that the intentions of this, this perpetrating, um, when they, when they came on the property. So, um, I, I, we thought of a fence, we thought, is there a way to do a senior park, you know, fence? We do that at a lot of our other campuses. Because we do that at a lot of our other campuses. But we, it's also the carpool lane. And in the morning, that would be open. And this occurred right after arrival of campus.
As a board, we've struggled with the, trying to make a campus safe without making it feel like a prison. You always want to have a welcoming environment, you want the students to feel safe, but you don't want them to, like, you're pulling up to raise a line, an area that's just a, a few welcome. It's kind of a, I guess it's been an issue ongoing since I've been on the board. Where do you draw the line, how can you make a campus safe without overdoing it, I guess? We have spent quite a bit of money, but we've got an officer at every school now.
And you could just, you had a lot of this.
Yeah, we also put security measures in place after the incident that occurred earlier this year on the football, football game. Port Allen, we put three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of metal sensing detectors, metal detectors at our schools that were a little less invasive. We have video, more video cameras that we put in place throughout the campuses. That's why we were able to get, that's why we were able to get the video footage of this, which was very helpful in detecting who the license, the license plate of the car.
So, I have a question or possible solution. What about a decal on the student vehicle to where if an officer would notice whether that car should be there because it's student parking versus a parent? Like, at your elementary school, they give you a little, well, you see a little tag, so you know it's carpool. And something like that that you could implement to?
We, we talked about a student, student ID, parking tag. The problem again, it's also the carpool lane. So, the same entrance to that parking lot is also where par, parents would drop off, you know, younger students who don't drive. So, I think that that's something that we should do, though, is put in a, a parking tag.
Well, my thought process is, it's a lot easier to scan across to see if that car should be there versus, like you said, it's a one entrance way, regardless of if you're a parent or a student, but you will be able to see that my truck shouldn't be there because I don't have the decal.
I have a question. I am the parent of the daughter. I'm the parent of the girl that, well, that's my daughter. And I want to know why it didn't take for me to put it on the news, for it to have more security at school this month, Friday, Monday?
I, Mr. Williams, I'm, I hate to put you on the spot, but I know that y'all, y'all were, y'all talked on Friday and the Monday.
So, I mean, and I told you from the moment it happened, the day of, we had additional security in the parking lot at the dismissal time of your daughter and every student that had heard her release, in addition to addition, the day, I mean, I talked to you on Friday. I got with Coach LaMond about adding additional duty teachers on the, in the parking lot. And I made sure when your daughter left that day that we had additional security during dismissal for her release time and every other one's release time. It wasn't anything, the, the thing that we done was up security with what we have right now on campus with additional teachers. Of course, when it went to the news, that wore more light to the situation. So, yes, I was leaving on campus on Monday, but it was more so along the lines of, okay, just to make sure we didn't have anything escalate from the news, the newscast itself. Your daughter, and I, I know when we talk back and forth, your daughter was protected, she wasn't escorted to her car, but we did make sure that we had ample security in the parking lot, just so that she could be safe, to make sure that she got off campus. And we had additional teachers on campus in the mornings following that incident as well, at the same time.
So, that was the, the week following?
Yes, from the, from that Friday, the day of, twenty second, we had additional security in the parking lot. Because I called you back and I asked what time did your daughter get out, telling you she was a senior. She gave me the time, I got with the SRO in that, we'd be in the parking lot during that time for that. Coach LaMond went for the second dismissal, for the second senior dismissal. And then we had our additional teachers online, I mean, in the parking lot for the regular dismissal time. So, from the moment, from that first Friday up until, still now through the day, we bumped up our duty teachers in the parking lot.
Let me ask you, what types of threats do we, do you think that the public should be made aware of? You know, like, that's a huge threat, and with the woman still out on the loose and everybody knowing who she is but her. So, like, what types of things, surely if there was a bomb threat, you sent out the alerts, everybody gets to know. But there's a woman out there hunting down a nigger. Should all my kids know, should all, should the community know? Like, what level threat should the community be made aware of? Because we've been a whole week without knowing anything.
So, Ms. Greenhouse, that's where we would have to call our attorneys. I don't.
We should find out, though, now, since we know that that risk is there.
I, I, I will do our research. Let me get, you know, give me some time to do that, because I don't know, what are we allowed to share, what are we not? Student privacy is, is, there's verbal laws, there's a, there's a lot of things that that come into play that I also, I can't relay to the public what our security measures are. So.
It should be safe at first.
I, I.
Rather than privacy, it should be safe.
Absolutely. So, let me research, and I invite you to come sit down, and we'll, we'll go over what I can talk about with security and safety. I don't know what I'm allowed to release.
Okay, and I'm just saying from a public, like, a public perspective, like, I don't even know, but I'm just saying, I just want to build some, the community needs to be able to trust that you guys are protecting the kids when we drop them off. And so, that's, so it's not about a me, you and I could talk anytime. It's about, it's, it's about every, you know, everybody, overall safety. It isn't an isolated individual thing, like, this is a big deal.
And it's even bigger because, if I'm understanding what the mom said, both of her daughters were in the car. And what if the younger sister, who wasn't the driver, had, really didn't do anything? What if she had been the person to go back to the car because she forgot her bookbag, or she forgot her ink pen? And she was a cussing when she really didn't, she was just a passenger? So, there does need to be some type of notification from the school when incidences like this happen, because if that had been a bomb threat, we'd all got them alerts on our phone, or we'd all got something where the school was locked down. In this instance, you didn't know if the threat was there, if it was coming back, why wasn't the school locked down? Or some type of, of alert system that went out to the parents and say, hey, we had an incident. We're doing our due diligence to safeguard the school and the students, but we need to make you aware of what did occur on our campus today.
And that's something you will definitely review, because I've never had a situation like this.
And that's fair, I understand that. But there was an incident, I believe, at Port Allen, where someone came onto the school campus to attack a child. And it was, once again, parents that went on a campus to attack a child. So, it's not like we don't know that this has occurred. And if we know that this is a, that's, for this to occur, what safety precautions are we putting in place to ensure that these kids are safe? Because what if the little girl had still been in the car and she had found her?
I think one of the concerns, I'm sorry, is the retaliatory efforts thereafter. So, for me, one thing that I give a plus to, years back, we had a mass shooting that happened somewhere else. And we did a, a post in our community spaces, in the Sugar Mill space, and said, hey, look, we're willing to volunteer our services and our time to come around. And then we started seeing SRO officers at the school, and it was perfect. It was like a solution, made it great. So, there's nobody more willing to go into an environment that's not safe than a parent. Well, in this case, retaliatory could have been even worse. If I would have got the call, you know, it would have been way worse. I'm ready to go ahead and give it all up for my child. And so then, concern, so the concern for me is not, you know, policy as much as it is me being able to be with my family, right? So, let's take that approach. And of course, I don't get emotional, but thinking about my kids makes me say I don't care. Right? So, I commend her for the way she handled it, because I'd be gone or in jail. And so. Could have been worse. So, that's the dynamic as dad, that I want, and it'd be anybody's child. When it was the mass shooting, it would have been black, white, we'd always been running there with our firearms to take away the threat. Wouldn't matter the color, we just know our children are most important. So, it's the same dynamic now, if you say that about my child, that's the case. If it was another parent getting ready to do something to another child, I'm going to defend a child. So, let's maybe look at a, informative dynamic for the adults. So that way, we can at least know, okay, it's being handled. Then we have systems in place, we got police already there to catch me from coming, right? And then, it can, we can actually work better.
Yes, sir.
Can I have one more question? As for the principal, after that happened, he told my daughter, oh, if you cool with it, then I'm cool with it, you can go back to class. I never got a phone call. I had to make a phone call, and the school board didn't get a phone call. I made the phone call. So, I want to know what's going on with the principal, was, you know, what happened to him?
Nothing. That's the personnel, and, and Mr. LaMond's not here for Monday. I don't know, I don't know that. I will research that as well.
We need you to research that.
I just, I just heard about that, it'll be two and a half hours ago. So, let me research that. There was more than just the principal there during that conversation. So, let me get statements, and we're going to follow it, just like, the SRO was present, and let me follow up with that. And I'll, and Mr. Williams and I will too.
As an elected board member, I want to, want to commend you to know the parents, the teachers, the school board, everybody that's here, that's not here, that if you give me a phone call, I would definitely follow up on what you're saying. I have received so many calls on both incidents. And I want you to know that you elected me to be your voice, and I will be your voice. And I'm, I'm really upset about the situation, as a lot of us should be. So, we will get with the superintendent, our attorney, and make sure that we have some procedures, proper procedures in place to protect our kids going to this school. The security, the principals, everybody that's in, in the immediate contact with our children should be security. Principals, the maintenance, all that should be security when it comes to our kids. And I want to make sure that I get with my board members and the superintendent and our attorney to make sure that we implement, because something should have been done, alarm should have went out. We have a, a situation going on at the school, we need to lock down the school. This was a serious matter, it should have been locked down, and, and different things like that should have happened in my personal, and I understand where you're coming from. So, I definitely want you all to give me a call, give the superintendent a call, we can get together and find out what the solution is on these problems that we have. The racial situations, all types of situations going on, it seems like we got a problem between Port Allen and Bruley, it's different. I've been hearing, I'm just relating what the parents and the citizens have came to me. And I, I don't like it, I want it handled, and that's what I'm elected for. And I, I intend to serve you, not the board. I intend to serve you. And I want you to know, if you come to me with a problem, I will get an answer for you. I just want you all to know, and we're going to definitely follow up on these procedures and put some things in place for our kids. On the other situation that we couldn't talk about, the personnel issue, I got a lot of calls on that. I was very upset about it. I can't speak on what they did, and how they did it, and why they did it, and when they did it. Was, you know, how y'all came to me as was so conveniently done the week before the school let out, so it could cool down and all that. I'm sure they got the message, they know where we're coming from, or y'all coming from. But we have to make sure that we doing things right, doing things by the book. Not black and white issue, not a PTO mid-issue, not other board members coming to you with an issue and, and boosting you, boosting you up. We have to know that we're going to do the right thing. It's all about doing the right thing, it doesn't matter whether you're black or white. And we're here to make that happen. And you all, I appreciate you all coming to the meeting and, and voicing your opinion, because I got so many calls, and it upset me to know that I just heard about it through the email, a, a text message the day that was coming out on the news. That, that upset me right there, to know that this had hap, had happened at the school. The school board was just knowing the day of, that it was going to come out on the news. So, if it came out on the news, what, how, what I was going to know? So, these are some concerns that I have, and I want you all to know that I'm here for it.
So, in response to that, what was the response time from when the incident was brought to the resource officer and the principal? That any call was made to the school board? Because my appreciation of what I'm understanding, what I'm reading, is that the mom notified the school board. Because I know that the resource officer knew who was in the real world as soon as he could get the page, because she's his mate.
He found out it was in the way we were through, weren't likely. You couldn't see her face on the camera, so we were able to get time frame down.
Well, we don't, you don't have to drive the car, but you have to. It took, it took longer to make sure we have a case, but anyway, that, that's, that's.
Superintendent, is there a way to create a task force to ensure there's transparency in this policy development? That, that includes the community?
Yes, ma'am. When I came here in West Ann Rouge, May first, the first position I created was a safety and security coordinator position. We wrote the job description, other districts around here followed suit. And we're in heightened times now, it's a different world. I asked Mr. Williams, I wanted somebody with an education background, background, that's a law enforcement background, background with working with kids, and I trust him with my life. So, I will pull together a group of people, and, and then we can work together to. We updated our emergency procedures, but those, those things, it's a document, we always need to make it better. So, yes, we will work with a community task force to, to, to make those things better.
And could the result of that task force be made publish, for the parents to see? Not, you don't have to do that, who are we, why? But just so that the public can be notified that you have made, created a task force and you went through those processes?
I mean, I know we can, we posted, we've had public, you know, the, the public task force meeting, but our security procedures, what, what a lockdown looks like, where kids go, I can't publish that. But, but, but what I can publish, we will.
Okay.
I, so the mom, I don't know if you received this already. On behalf of myself and the board, I want to apologize to you publicly that you did not receive the call that you should have received at the time the situation happened.
Thank you.
The incident that attorney Melo spoke of, that put out, I was there, and I know simultaneously, the calls were made to the police officer, to, and to the parents of the students that were involved. So, I apologize to you publicly for that. I've been meaning to reach out to you, but I've been dealing with a child recovery from surgery, so I apologize if you didn't receive what was due.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. From the school?
Yes, ma'am. Not from the school.
Not from the school.
Personal.
It wasn't offered by the school?
No, I have, still haven't talked to the school.
So, there's no counseling to the school?
No.
So, I'm sure that Mr. Smith would get with the principals, attorneys, and whoever he needs to get with, to see what the issue was with the principal not notifying you immediately, or taking more action on the situation, he would have to get with the principal and, and, and find out what happened with that situation. Because it, you know, principals are getting reassigned, so, you know, they, they have to get reassigned.
Let me just say, this is, this is, this is kind of like new territory for all of us.
That's right.
You know, and, and we have to work together and go from here, because it would, it would be awful for something catastrophic to happen if we not, haven't got together, worked together, put some of this stuff in place. You know, no matter what child it is.
That's right.
That's our main concern.
Yeah, as you said, you're right, this is the new territory here.
Racism?
Just. Who would ever think that somebody would do something of that nature? You got to be concerned about what's here. We know that, we got, we got to do something different, we can talk about it and stuff like that. I, I can tell you from people I've talked to, they just went, what the heck with all of this lady, what would she think?
Someone on the board, or wasn't it the central office, that the Bruley Elementary School PTO president contacted about getting rid of, like, to alarm you guys, that she, that the person, that the.
like, to alarm you guys and that she, that the person, that the principal was a problem? No, I'm not gonna talk about the personnel. I'm talking about the boards, the elected board. They said that they contacted the PTO, the board. It's not a personnel issue. These are the elected officials.
Bottom line, let me tell you later on, it was before. I can name four of them right now, they were all white.
Yeah, one of them's, uh, husband was on the lower floor at the time.
And it's, it's, it's happened for years. My whole thirty seven years, it's been rumors. Not all the time, but it's happened. But there's things that.
Yeah, they not worth it.
What is the reason?
It's a personnel confidentiality, it's personnel.
You can't be confident to do it.
This would be the only thing I'd say. I will need with my attorney and the personnel impacted. That's it. And I will handle that with, with that, that.
Mr. Smith, I'm just saying from your, from your boards, we don't want to be divisive. And so if, if there's division created because there's, our, our PTO can't come to the board and say, she's a problem or whoever's a problem because they're hiring outside people, we're locals, it was like our locals, that's not.
No board member came to me, so.
Okay, that's what can go.
If individuals speak to their constituents, they're allowed to do so.
So I'm asking who did it? Not you, so not you and not the, who, who received the information? It's accountability, that's it.
One question. The EEOC, who, who, who does they contact? Did they get with your attorney, the EEOC?
They can contact our attorney.
Okay.
That's what we want.
I don't know if I can even speak on this, attorney. But it was brought to me months ago, that an issue was going on with me. That Dr. Green, because she now is a doctor. And, uh, so it was months ago, so, and I just, you know, I addressed it with Dr. Smith. Nothing could be determined or, uh, discussed. But I thought it was okay, and we went on about our merry way. And now here we here today. That, that's what, that's what happened with me, at, um, Ms. Green.
Yeah, that's what I was getting ready to say. Act one of twenty twelve passed, you know, now more than a decade ago. What it says is it took all the power away from board members in the first place. Board members have no authority in the personnel area at all. One hundred percent of the authority now rests with the superintendent by state law. Even to the point that if a board member were to call the superintendent and say, I don't like, I didn't like who you named as the principal, or I didn't like who you named as a football coach, or I didn't like this, or I didn't like that. If that is construed as pressure being exerted on the superintendent by a board member, that's a violation of law in which they can be fined by the ethics board. And so the bottom line is, is that board members are not involved in personnel. And actually, it's a little bit of a risk over, you know, should constituents can call them? Because if a constituent calls a board member and says, I don't like what they're doing on a personnel action, the, the response of the board member should be, well, thank you for bringing it to my table, but please understand, I don't have any authority. I have no authority in the personnel area by state law. All of that authority has been sent to the superintendent. Now, let me say also, the superintendent didn't ask for that. That change in authority was not requested by the superintendent. That was the administration, the governor, who was in office at that time, who decided that board members should be cut out of the personnel area and that all personnel decisions should be left to the superintendent and the principals. And that's when the change was made. Again, that change has been here with us now since August one of twenty twelve. And every time I meet with the boards, I insert with the board members to, to tell them to stay out of personnel matters. And you've heard me say it, this board's heard me say it many times. You have to stay out of personnel matters because state law prohibits you from getting a call.
Right or wrong?
Right or wrong?
Right or wrong?
They prohibit, they prohibit board members from telling the superintendent what should be done. They don't, they can, a board member can say to the superintendent, I got a call, and that's it. And that's pretty much it.
So, Mr. Hammond, I guess the question is, if there are communications where individuals are saying that they spoke to the board or they may or may not have spoken to the superintendent, and then the exact actions that they were trying to have effected come into play and actually occur, what is the public supposed to believe? Where's the transparency?
What's the recall?
That's it, that's it.
I don't really understand the question, but board, but, but the public can contact a board member and bring something to the board member's attention. The board member can then bring it to the attention of the superintendent so that he and his staff can investigate, and he and his staff can take appropriate action. Beyond reporting the concern to the superintendent, board members don't have any authority in the personnel area.
But you would agree that.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Understood, perfect. But you would agree that if board members are bringing issues and items to the superintendent and then the, I guess I'm gonna say the request of the board members has been put into place by the superintendent, you would have, you can't deny that it impacts, or has the potential to impact.
Well, it always has the potential because, just if I get into a board, Ms. Luat calls superintendent and says, I got a call from, I got a call from a constituent. And, and the super, and, and superintendent says, thank you for bringing it to my table. On the other hand, he might find that there would be administrative to address it. So if, if concern was brought to his attention, it's gonna be whether he and his professional staff determine that some action should be taken as a result of the concern that was brought to their attention.
And that's fair, is there an investigatory period or a report that come out that they made? Or is that all just one of those?
Well, definitely, because if it results in personnel action against the employee, the employee finds out about it. But under state law also, all personnel matters, and personnel matter is defined, or personnel record is defined in state law to be cumulative, to the performance of an employee. So any document, so if he, if he and his staff do an investigation, they have certain investigative, I'll call it investigative file, just for lack of a better term. That investigative file can only be shared with the employee. Now, if the employee says, I don't care who gets it, and the employee chooses to give it to a third party, that's the, the rights of the employee. In Article one, section five of our constitution says, every citizen in this state has a right to privacy. And the right to privacy, as interpreted by the courts, to be, uh, the rights to, uh, their personnel records. And that those personnel records cannot be disclosed without the consent of the employee. And so from the standpoint of my advice.
Judiciary discretion?
My client, I'm gonna tell my client, you don't release any public record, I mean, excuse me, any personnel records because state law prohibits you from doing so. If the employee chooses to release it, that's the employee's business. As far as the school system, uh, my, my consistent advice is to never release personnel records as a result.
And that's a judiciary discretion?
I'm sorry.
Judiciary, a judiciary discretion, you can go to the judge to get everything?
None of these, most of these matters don't go to the judge. These are personnel matters handled by the staff, I'm talking about. Issues that go to the judge are gonna come either from the DA's office, or they're gonna come from an outside agents. And with regard to those, again, systems, this school system doesn't have any control on what happens with the DA's office or with the court system.
Oh, yeah, that, that what I was explaining, you could get it through judiciary, uh, discretion.
Yet, what?
You can file the necessary documents in order for to get the information that you, uh, need. The normal, the normal thing, I, I understand you say that, uh, that they had control of it. But the only way you can take that control away is through judicial discretion, civil action. And you can file, you can get it through discovery, particulars?
Well, if there's a lawsuit that's filed in a case, then you have discovery in a lawsuit.
Well, you can get it through that.
But again, I, I'm talking about your typical complaint, staff investigation.
Oh, I ain't talking about complaint, I ain't talking about complaint. We, we threw a complaint, you, you, you can explain it all, complaint. After complaint, they do have a right to get a judicial notice on what's going on, a judiciary construction judgment, particular, discovery. Get the information that they need to try to find out exactly what happened in order for them to attack the issue at present.
Mr. Hammond?
Well, I, I really, I'm not following your question very.
No, 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 not a question. It, it's not a question. You could get it through the filing of a civil action. Any document that you request a civil action, because I done did it before.
I mean, you, you have to sue somebody to get some.
Yeah, you, now I'm talking about the civil action. So, so there's a way to get it, there's a way to get it, but you have to get it through a civil action.
Right, if you, if there was a lawsuit that could lawfully be filed, then you have discovery that would be lawfully.
Discovery, particularly.
Cards with that lawsuit, that's true of anyone.
Compelling information. You can compel all that, you get all the information you want.
Um, so like if, if an employee, whoever, if they're under a contract, who would have that information? Only the superintendent or would these board members also know the particulars about an employee's contract plan?
Well, everybody who's in a position that's higher than a teacher has a contract of at least two, no more than four, by state law. So there is a contract.
Right.
Now, I haven't looked at the contracts in this system, but ordinarily, most of the systems are using foreign contracts. And so they're gonna have, it's gonna be the same contract that's applicable to all administrations. Not gonna be on anything in there that's any different than any other contract.
Who would know what my term is, two to four, two or four years? Would the only, is that something that's not disclosed as well? Would these board members know about that regarding any?
The board, I'm almost positive, this board has already voted on a policy that says all contracts be two.
Two years?
From my knowledge, every system in the state is telling the same thing, two-year contracts. And I'll tell you why, just a simple script. They had a superintendent who did not get the news. And in his, his last meeting, which was a December meeting, before he went into the meeting, he went and gave new four-year contracts to every administrator of the whole school system. And on the way out, he said, okay, see you later. And stuck the new superintendent with every single administrator with a brand-new four-year contract. And as a result of that, legislation was introduced that made every board and all boards in the state, all two-year contracts. And again, the contracts are boilerplate, you know, there's, some of them have a little bit difference with performance objectives. As to what that be fine, because I think every kind of, um, most of the systems in the state would be.
So with the personnel issue, uh, I think that, uh, Mr. Smith will be the only one to determine anything. So do you have a board that can make a conscious decision based on whatever you've investigated? Or you have a, a committee or, or you?
I have an HR director, I always confer with our team.
Those are the three people that you confer with with any personnel?
My supervisory staff, uh, I, I would quit my entire supervisory staff. But personnel, I will always go through our attorney, especially in contract.
Now, now, how many schools do we have in, in, in West Ann Rouge that y'all operate? How many schools?
Ten schools.
Ten schools? And is it fair to say the majority of them are minority students?
In Port Allen?
In Port Allen, uh, South?
Students?
Students, and, well, let me get straight to the point. How many principals out of them ten schools are minority?
A little less than half.
Huh?
A little less than half.
A little less than half?
One.
So out of eleven, there's four that are, uh, that's in there.
Principals, come on, principals, well, in ten schools, you got ten, how many principals are minority?
Out of eleven, there are four.
Four. Don't say one, ten, one, I mean, two? That's, that's a problem.
You go on our website, you can find it.
You're supposed to know that.
Well, this guy, we kinda gone way beyond the ideal, which was just a presentation.
You indicated that if a board member came to you, came to the superintendent and gave them information, the superintendent would investigate it? And you make a decision and then discuss it with that employee, correct?
I was, you were the employee.
Yes, okay. When that discussion takes place with the employee, does the superintendent tell that employee why they're being transferred to you?
That's, uh, depends on circumstances. I can't think of a million possible, uh, factual situations. Some of, some of it's obvious, some of it's not so obvious. Uh, and I think it's a case-by-case situation.
So if that employee asks, why am I being transferred, and they don't tell them?
Well, usually what they're, they may say something like, because it's my job to do what's in the best interest of the system. And in my opinion, in my opinion, the best interest of the system would be in different alignment of administrators. Now, that's the kind of an answer that's a legitimate answer, but sometimes it's not the type of answer that a lot of people get, or like to get. Because they'll say, well, what do you mean it's not in the best interest? And that's why the superintendent has to ultimately, somebody has to ultimately be responsible. And he has to ultimately make that decision as for what he thinks is best, in the best interest.
That's credential wise?
So a response that I don't have to tell you is helpful?
Yes, he, he doesn't have to tell, but I most, most supervisors do.
Are those transfers permitted in the middle of the school year?
Yes. And this, from what I hear, is what I know about it, uh, this is not a, it's a lateral transfer. So it's not a, not a demotion, it's not a stinkup. It's, it's moving to a different location to, to be, be in a position. That is something that happens fairly frequently.
So you're saying that you can tran, you can, you can terminate someone's position from this personnel law without giving them a reason? So you can tran, transfer them because they're gay, because they're a woman, because they're white? And you never have to tell them, never have to tell them why?
That's correct.
That's, that's all.
That's, that's correct. They have, you have the ability to laterally transfer any employee. And actually, I, I had that case, I mean, I'm aging myself now. I had a case where a principal was transferred from a school where he lived across the street from the school to another school in the parish that was sixty-five miles away. And he was not offered any explanation as to why he was transferred. He filed a lawsuit on that basis, uh, and the court ruled if it's a lateral transfer, a principal to principal, that, and it's from within the parish to another school within the parish, and the salary stays the same, that, that was perfectly permissible. And so, again, the PS to that story is that that principal later, went, later on, became the superintendent. But, uh, that's, uh, that's well-established, they had a lateral transfer permitted. And indeed, if you didn't have the ability to make lateral transfers, then we'd be terminating a lot of people. Because if the only way that you could move somebody into a new position was to lay somebody off, then you'd have to be, you'd have to lay off a whole lot more people than most school systems are laying off these days.
So have we, uh, we have turned somebody, uh, and they have a new principal?
We, um.
Interim.
Can I say something? I just wanna know, what, what's the students taking into consideration? Because I have a child in the elementary. Were they taking into consideration with the lateral transfer? Because my son goes to Brulee Elementary and he's a five-year-old. When he came home, he said, I know Ms. Green. How do I explain that to my son? And we didn't even know, we didn't know nothing that Ms. Green was gone. We didn't know nothing about it until, I was like, well, what's going on? I see a new car parked in her, her slot now. But my thing is, did y'all consider the students, the love that Ms. Green has for those children? That is just stunning. That, that, that is, is, I'm not saying that this lady is not gonna do what her job is. But I know from my personal experience with Ms. Green, the love that she has for those children at Brulee Elementary, and she shows it every day, that shocks my child. Because he's saying, mommy, no green is green. Mommy, we know that's green, because you know what Ms. Green do? She's on duty every morning, and she hugs every last one of those children in the morning. So when things and decisions are made, I wanna know, do y'all consider? So when things and decisions are made, I wanna know, do y'all consider the children? The level of, the, the level of devastation that of my, I know my child personally. I know the things that, that she has done for my kids. So I just wanna know, do y'all consider these babies? Because all of them asking, where is Ms. Green? And I think that that could have been handled a little better as far as that went. And at least until, at, at least until the end of the year. So they, they, they have two months for summer, and we know stuff and transitions happen during the summer. And that move could have been made after these kids completed this year, because they are looking for her. And I know my kid, every night, mommy, well, I, I didn't see Ms. Green today. She must, is she sick? She, they don't know. They don't understand being that small.
Yes, ma'am. Just, that would make me actually slightly, that's all, I'm not at liberty to say.
I come back no deal.
The other, the other way to speak, I saw was that, and address it, you don't have to email, you could also address it during comment period. I know y'all keep saying we have run out of time, but is that, does that still apply?
On action items, this is gonna be action.
None, none of the action.
Just really not at liberty to speak, oh, blocking deeply about any of these personal matters. And I would tell, everything, everyone, this board, your school system is better off without having school board members involved in personnel every day.
But we don't need a school board, then if you can't get involved with the community. A school board needs to be, it's like.
So who's gonna be in charge of recruiting the new principal?
She's not ready yet.
She's there already?
Yeah.
She's there.
She's there.
She called everyone. Going on by principals.
When did this, when, when this decision first came about to move the? Oh, so it's still back no deal? That's a back no deal. That's a back no deal. They planned this before school, so y'all take.
The, the thing, the problem is, is that, like, some, some of the faculty there, they already knew. So, like, they knew weeks ago. And so that's the thing, that's why we have to clean up the back. And I'm not trying to, because it's just unfair that the community finds out a certain way, but you have a group of teachers that already knew. They should shut up. You know what I'm saying? That's what I'm saying. That's the problem with it. So those are the type of discipline problems. I, I don't wanna imply discipline, but I'm saying, like, those things is what destroys public trust. That certain people, alre, it was already from this office, already had given that information that she was already leaving. So for her to, okay? Okay?
And they talked about it.
Everybody's entitled to their opinion.
If this isn't an opinion, I'm not expressing.
That was facts, and it happened. There was no opinion, that was facts, and it happened.
I'm not expressing an opinion. And it's just responsible to keep your information quiet, because it hurts the community.
We're done with the personnel issue. Greatly appreciate everybody coming here.
My question would be, how would that group of people know? To talk about it, if it's a personnel issue, the person in the office should have never discussed it with the teachers, for them to be able to talk about that? That is so disrespectful. To learn that you're gonna be, you, they talked about that. Teachers talked about it. So why is it not, why is it a personnel issue for you all, but it's not a personnel issue for you to talk with us? But y'all could talk to the teachers about it? That's still confidentiality. That's still a, that's a confidentiality issue, because they weren't aware and they talked about it in their system. And it was the school. And, and in order for the school teachers to talk about it, that means the school board talked about it. I'm sorry. Now, I be quiet a lot, but that's crazy.
There have to be plans, there have to be.
The answers that we want to get. You're saying you appreciate, but we still haven't got a lot of answers. And we'll be back to get the answers that we need. And, and we gotta keep showing up on these streets.
Y'all had to follow.
We gotta keep on asking questions. Bottom line. Bottom line.
That's their game, y'all playing the black people.
Mr. Smith as a su, uh, superintendent.
That's their game, y'all playing the. Y'all had to talk to somebody. Y'all had to, who called the woman to come to work? Who called other, uh, uh, person to come to work? Who called, who was the first, made the first phone call for the other person to come to work? Did you call the person up? Somebody else called. Who called the person to come to work to take the other lady's job? Somebody had to make that phone call. If we don't get it, we can get this through discovery, just like.
So don't go report Ms. Davis said nothing. That's on my page. I'm not Ms. Davis. They're gonna report Ms. Davis. She did not say anything.
Somebody made that phone call. They don't wanna say who made that phone call. To whoever, principal took taking that person's class. And they made that call, and they made that call. They not gonna say who made that phone call. And y'all not gonna get it. Y'all not gonna get no information unless y'all file a civil action. Y'all get nothing, because y'all dealing with some evil people here. Y'all ain't dealing with, y'all dealing with straight dope. Y'all, y'all dealing with some straight demons. Y'all ain't dealing with no, these people been oppressors, black people for many years. They know, I know, I got the record. General Allen is a crew clerk, man. They named Port Allen after General Allen. Y'all dealing with some evil people. Y'all dealing with people cut y'all throat and don't give a damn about.
They on the next meeting, so take it out.
Okay, okay. I'm just letting that man.
Mr. Fescus? Mr. Watt? Dr. Walker? Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Yeah.
Ms. Grace?
Yeah.
Mr. David Park?
Yeah.
Mr. Maranto? Ms. Basra? Here. Mr. Sheen?
Here. All right, number one, uh, DS Bus update?
Yes, sir. Um, as you all are aware, we've had some business with, um, with bus, uh, safety, uh, especially the last two months. Uh, it was posted on the news of a video of students standing on the bus, uh, while the bus was in motion. Um, I asked DS Bus to come, uh, meet with us today and while they were here, uh, to come and, and give us some resolutions. Specifically on, uh, safety. Uh, we had two bus accidents, uh, on Wednesday, February seventh. Uh, students standing was reported speeding and running red lights. Um, the lack of drivers causing double up of routes, um, causing safety concerns with lack of assigned seats for students to the seats, students standing on the bus while in motion, et cetera. Increased discipline issues on buses due to their numbers, uh, the dismissal times. Uh, some of our schools, especially on the tier, the second tier, it's taking, uh, over an hour per dismissal, which is entirely too long. Uh, driver morale, uh, I know some of the posts that have been on Facebook about, uh, hourly pay, uh, their pay when they do a double up route, um, et cetera. And then also, our contract is up, uh, after next school year. So what can we do, um, in the meantime, and what can we do next year? Uh, we, we, we kind of brainstormed today with some, uh, options. And I just wanted to turn it over to DS about the things, uh, working, kind of, guys through what we're talking about.
Thank you.
I'm Cory Gack. Some of you have seen the bulletin that happened. This is for the President of Customer Service. Um, is that what you're, this one? Thank you. Thanks everybody. So I was like, I have a conversation with them. So, uh, what you said was pretty much right on the head. Um, I'm not, I mean, you kind of gave you three bullet points to go through, but this all, all at the time, so I'll, I'll give a little bit of, uh, conversation and I'll vice and feedback and share. We're at the point of the year, where drivers become hard workers. We find this thing hard to deal with. So we're four, four drivers, but, um, our pay, um, here, but our pay is aligned with everybody else. And now, in the air, for sort of first, it, uh, student, uh, exercise, all that, or some of all of that, eighteen to nineteen dollars an hour. Pay, uh, we, we first started here, we were a customer, uh, now we're an equal, which means that we're not being a corporate person, uh, through school. So, um, we're trying to put two things together, which we talked about a lot as well. Um, first, the thing that we have in the, um, hopefully in the air a little bit, either, uh, so, Dr. Smith, after we put something together, right? Uh, so, so we're gonna go ahead and, uh, I just don't look at the past, it's not be said more, but we just wanna head it up. We're doing this on a weekly. A little weekly, and it's like, when it comes to work this week, it's six weeks, um, but hopefully that'll be enough to guide them to, to want to come to work. It's, it's not a kind of money, it's not a insignificant amount of money, but it's, it's, you know, a hundred bucks, uh, if you do come to work, you know, a hard to handle. So, so hopefully that will help us, uh, uh, we'll, we do have, uh, reached out to some of the other locations. There's a little bit of scramble this afternoon, other communications, we're gonna, we're gonna, tomorrow. So, uh, so I did get a lot of feedback, kind of, from the drivers, the drivers, if you have any drivers that you're involved with. Sometimes we do, we have a bunch of surplus and deficits, um, throughout the region, so we can grab a few racks and have a little, take some of the rest on. We'll get rid of those double up areas. The other thing that was, that was a lot right next to, I'm gonna say the name of it, probably the area that we're doubling again. Really, thank you very much. So, I do wanna say hi.
They've had double ups on this side of the world.
But we know that, that, what we know is that it takes a lot of traffic on that side of the world, right? So what we're gonna do is look at how we can double up on a different side of the world. I don't wanna say we're gonna start with anybody, if there's an opportunity, look at, say, here, if you're obviously familiar, it's probably easier to use that one, cause inconvenience for those folks, or at least for a little bit. But let's hope our first two conditions work.
New, we have three people also, because we're down four drivers.
We're down four, yeah, it's three people, I was gonna say, three people are trading. I'm gonna look the devil where you, you know, it could be a, a lot of, a lot of. One person next week? This week?
Two people, the next two.
All right, so, are there two more?
And then one more after that, um, should be hopefully the following week, because they already have a CDL, they just have to get the certification of the S endorsement.
Hopefully in the next three, so we'll see all that, kind of, we'll do whatever we can by the polls. And I can throw as much away as I can, and I will, but it's all I can do. The folks that we'll bring in, we'll have the house. We'll put them up here, and we'll, we'll change, we'll change part of it whenever, so hopefully we'll get some information back tomorrow, no. Tomorrow's a storm, so I'll get, I'll get information the following day, but the world will follow up with you, uh, on all that. Um, that's where, um, that ends for that. Um, you wanna do a little bit about the moron?
Yeah, sure.
I'm happy to. Um, so, yeah, again, my name is, is Peter Delany, and I'm in client relations. Prior, shared with, uh, Dr. Smith this morning, prior to joining the company, uh, as the principal, and on her folks' side of the world. So certainly understand some of the challenges, you know, I mean, I know we're way out of COVID, but pre-COVID, post-COVID, with, uh, recruiting and personnel, it's a little bit of a different environment. So as Cory mentioned, our goal first and foremost is to, you know, be an employer of choice. And, uh, we have both a stated and a, um, uh, budgeted goal of, of staffing ten percent beyond what our contract with each district calls for. And so, uh, we, we know we're not there, as Cory mentioned, we're, we're down four. We have three in the pipeline, as DeBor said. Uh, but our, our goal is to be ten percent beyond that, so we will keep, you know, keep recruiting to that effect, to, to get to that point. And, uh, in the conversation this morning with Dr. Smith, recognize want to create both a, you know, an immediate for the spring and then a short-term and a longer-term plan. To be that employer of choice and to raise those driver wages from where they currently are, which is in the middle of the pack, to a, a, a more desirable spot. So we're, we're, we're committed to working to that. Uh, and as you folks, right, first and foremost, our commitment is to safety, so situations like the ones that Dr. Smith described as far as, you know, four kids in a seat, not acceptable, students standing, not acceptable. So we, we understand that and we'll work, uh, towards that and, and really work to make sure that, um, you know, the, the long delays post pickup. Um, you know, certainly you folks, between the first two poles, the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup, you folks have the, 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 the larger task of educating, more important task of educating the kids. So, you know, we're committed to doing our part in that. Relative to the driver morale, I'm happy to share some things with you, if, if you would like me to go through, like, what we do currently have in place and what are planned. Um, so the company, um, you know, as far as culture and community efforts, um, we do have employee culture groups that are available to all employees, um, as, as part of the organization. Um, the, we have, uh, well-being and, uh, employee assistance programs, uh, free assistance to employees for, uh, mental health, emotional health, counseling, financial management, legal assistance, family matters, that's all free, as being a part of our, our company, our family. And then we have learning and development, um, free through our online and on-demand programs for people to be able to, you know, have professional development, increase their career opportunities, not only with us, but, um, outside of, outside of the company. Um, the benefits package, we offer a 401K that our company matches. We have part-time and full-time benefit plans. We have a thing called Perk Spot, which is an employee discount program that all, all employees have access to, and the company pays for, um, life insurance. And then the driver wages, as Cory mentioned and I referenced, uh, we do frequent market analysis to make sure that we're competitive in the region. But honestly, our goal is to be the employer of choice and to be above that, so, um, you know, those are the goals. There is the reality of, so I think the world that we live in today is that jobs have kind of gone the way of a lot of things, which is people look at jobs as disposable in ways that they perhaps didn't a generation ago. So we're adapting and adjusting to our recruiting efforts to look at, how do we, um, how do we keep our, keep staffed uh, in a way that reflects people's, um, work habits and, and work, work preferences? So we do have, um, and, um, I try to move this away, but we do have initiatives where, for instance, I had spoken last year in Washington DC to the Department of Transportation, Robert Hutchinson is the director, and Congressman Lohood, who is the co-chair of the Congressional Bus Caucus. We did present a plan where we would partner with local community colleges, and we would, uh, offer, um, any, any community college students who, uh, were taking like education or business courses, who would also be willing to drive for us. Have a program that we created, a partnership, where they could get credits and pay at the same time, and hopefully come up with CDL, whether they work for us. That's, you know, be a valuable life asset. So that's certainly things that we're looking to explore in different markets and different regions. And if, I share that tonight, not, again, not to distract in a point, but if anyone is connected with a local community college, or has those, we welcome the, the connection and the feedback to talk about, is this something that, you know, the community would be interested in or has that type of connection? Ongoing process. I know, I just shared with Dr. Smith this morning, pre-COVID, when I was a high school principal, I had thirty-three substitute teachers. Post-COVID, I had three. And so we were learning to, to, uh, to balance and work in that environment, and we're, we're continuing to do that. But recognizing again, that between those two poles of drop-off and pickup, folks don't wanna be in the bus business, you're in the school business. And we wanna make that as a seamless, uh, four-years bus. Happy to answer that question.
What does your market research say that driver paying needs to be paying people long-term, or maybe there isn't?
I can speak to that anymore. So, uh, my territory isn't this, like, you see, I was for, um, the southwest, basically, uh, in Mexico. So I've seen everything, and I've worked in the entire United States, I've worked in. The issue with, with pay is that someone always comes up to your level. And then what happens is that you need to build a level, that's a big enough gap that you retain those people, and they're honestly, I'm gonna tell you, it's three to five years. The workforce that I used to have, uh, was a lot of retirees, uh, a few who would, would want to work part-time. Uh, those folks, they might never come back to the workforce. I'm still not missing the kinds of people that have, uh, part-time. So, uh, those folks that we used to get, so our target is to try to do so for three to five years. Um, and to do that, we basically try to act out somebody else's stable. So when we go up X amount. But, uh, but, uh, we're gonna, yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, come up significantly, um, to try to manage that. And, and that should keep them off, because this is how it works. I'm telling you, when we talk about, like, here, we can agree on a price, and I can raise mine, we all. and, and that should keep them off, because this is how it works, I'm telling you, when we talk, like, here, we can agree on a price, and I can raise mine, they'll, they can't do it for the next three to five years, because they're in that contract, unless they go back to the customer, say, hey, you need one month, they may, they may not. Uh, but I usually find that I get a couple of years out of that situation, uh, and if I give them the door, and they can see the culture, they usually get to a step, uh, and that's usually the three to five years. So they'll stay for the two, for their total amount of money, they'll stay the next couple of years, gives it like a year, and then they usually find something else they wanna do, and they can serve to off.
Doc, the recommendation when we were talking today is, um, we are gonna have to redo a contract, um, if we're happy with the services they can provide, and they've got approved to us, uh, then we, we need to, um, we need to include a pay table in our next contract. There, that way they guarantee to us the minimum, or the average driver pay that we'll stay at. Uh, that way, we know that our contract's gonna go up, it's going up in other districts that are using, um, for a student and other bus companies, so prepare ourselves for that, that's going to happen. But I wanna know that that money goes to the employees, not just the bottom line, so.
And to be fair, I just, I don't wanna cut it off, but it, it's not just employees, unfortunately, it's not just employees, I have infrastructure that I have to pay for now.
Right.
Three years ago, a bus was eighty thousand dollars, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that's a huge size. Anyone wanna pay double? No, but that's, that's what we're facing, and so when we have, uh, issues of buses coming out years-wise, which we do here, um, we're gonna have to, and it's, and the life of that next contract, I need to pay for in between. So that goes somewhere to the fleet, so I don't wanna disillusion anyone that it's gonna go directly to all the drivers, it's gonna be the infrastructure too for those drivers, so it will go to fleet, it will go to probably fuel costs, uh, but it will go for payroll and, and that infrastructure, that's what it will be.
Will the insurance?
Insurance, yeah, because if you live in a state that is, um, you ever driven down a highway in your state, sir? So, I apologize to that, it's something I can do, but I know if I ever need to sue someone, I'm gonna sue someone, but, uh, but anyway, that's, that's the problem, uh, that's separate from that piece of business, it just happens in this, which is the state, we, we, we've, we've seen the repercussions of that, which is unfortunate.
So what happens when the doubling up of routes, uh, kids get missed, uh, 'cause the sub-driver or the driver that doesn't typically run that route bypasses the house or a street, uh, so that happens, that's the majority of the calls that we get, uh, you know, my sister or something like that. Um, also dismissal times go from thirty minutes to an hour, or an hour and twenty minutes, uh, it's just a, a huge vicious cycle, kind of.
So, some good news there, I'll touch on one of the pieces of technology, one, um, we use, uh, EasyRush now, which is a software, where we can recap routes a lot better.
That's been much better.
Than the old software we used to use, the old software, you don't send the computer engineer, it was a great, like, computer engineers, who would use the software. It was terrible, it wasn't terrible, it was really good, it was terrible if you were the end user at the dispatch table, I mean, I could do something without it, this one's much better. We're also gonna be having cameras, you know, uh, hopefully the next few months, that's what they found me, so if they tell me three months, I think it's six months, I'm hoping by the seven next year, so when I recap those routes on a fly, I'd say, I'm just gonna use a new cable. I had routes today, I had two drivers call, I gotta crunch that up to eight routes, and if I could, if I could, if I could, I'd push those routes up to five, so I'll turn my turn, so, which would be effective, so you shouldn't miss.
Then parents can see when their kids are gonna get home, that's what we want.
That's part of it, that's part of it, you know, there's a whole, I'm not sure, and we recut it, that'll happen, it's not exactly on that question, 'cause I don't know the answer to it. Because, if, because if we recut it, and, and, I don't wanna get into debate about technology, 'cause it'll come on for hours, but let's say that that should be an option, and that will be backed. And the other piece, if you, you kind of touched on safety issues, is that, um, we have, uh, speeding and some other stuff, we have a company, uh, called Daisies Drive, being down on all the vehicles, and we're on Monday odd, it tells us when someone's offering a seatbelt, it tells us if people are behaving on the bus, it tells us if the drivers on a phone are speeding or anything now. Uh, swearing, it works off if you didn't tell me it's an AI, and so, uh, we just put that in muscle product.
It, it went live at the beginning of March.
So we had a month, I, I wanted to say a month, but I know, we were, I was doing, doing up the region, so we've had it for a month. Mr. Oscar has a coaching deck, so what they do is they give us scores, and we coach those folks that are doing the things that we don't want to do on a bus, and Oscar actually has the best score in an entire company, you have, the more we use it, the more people know it's out there.
It would be version one, version two, and the parent app is, is a part of it, we're designing it in-house, so it's not like we're taking, we're buying this off the shelf, but it will work. So we have a design team who has made this to specs, we're currently, um, with twelve different school districts around the country, and we sort of, we're, we're, uh, we're, we're piloting it and testing it, and basically trying to work out any kinks. But part of that will, is a parent app, it's, has to be connected into with the fleet, you know, updates to the tablet, so that won't be the first part that's ready to go, but it is, is, is coming, and it is coming in the, you know, near future. The difference with it is, it's not like you can track the house, or, or an Uber ride, it is a little bit different, 'cause they're all of the transportation, but if, we'll let parents know, like, when a bus is left to school, they'll know it's left, it's left on time. When it comes within a geo-fence of, like, say, two miles of the house, there is, there are features with that, we just wanna make sure that, when we roll that feature up with districts, that it actually solves the problem and doesn't create an expectation that the technology doesn't live up to. And when I say that, I don't mean we're not confident in it, but there, there are multiple moving parts to make sure that that really works. Part of that, that plan, and the other, you know, those other functions, the messaging, the video requests, the incident reports, those are all part of facilitating communication too, from the vent, us, the vendor, to the school district, that creates visibility to that information on both sides, and efficiency in that communication process. And I know it's a really good, DeBor and her staff superintendent, and, and, and team today noted that the communication is, 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 is good, but we can always tighten that up and, and get it stronger, so that it's, again, that information's sortable and reportable, so. It, it is coming, um, the, the, the main part of it is, we'll be ready to go for the fall, if the district's interested, if people are trained up on both sides, and then the, the parent app, uh, will come after that. Put a day out right now, because I don't know specifically on the, the attachment to fleet, but not too far distant.
On the, on the buses, um, I haven't seen any kind of information, um, in case a parent wants to call and report something, um, phone number.
The buffer's different, like, you know.
Like, how's my driver, you know, how's my driver, with a phone number?
Yeah, we don't do that.
Like, a lot of commercial, um.
We don't do that as a company, I, I've been.
You can't have that on the bus in Louisiana.
Yeah, so there you go, so that, you can have it on the bus in Louisiana, but I, I have paid for that service before, it's not that bad, it's usually only when they're mad at you that they call, and then, then we go back and pull the camera, and we're like, um, like I was actually a caller on the bus.
The Lytics camera, that, that we use in it?
But that's absolutely AI.
That's a, that's AI and it's coaching, so it, it not, it, it's, it gives immediate feedback to when drivers are violating, um, whether it's maybe rolling through a stop sign, right? And then that information comes back to Oscar, and he works with the team, you know, with the drivers on that, so it is a constant course curving, both in the moment, and as we go through our normal safety meetings and safety procedures.
Listen, Oscar, how many events you have last month?
I had, uh, a hundred and fifteen, actually, it was actually five hundred and seventy minutes, between all the buses, and actually, our district here, including East Bad Rouge Hall, which we're trying to get built it up.
Yeah, we're trying to.
A lot of it is not here, a lot of it is, well, we're in another side of the road.
But yours were, when you got to the, we, sometimes I, I miss this, but when you got there, how many were there real?
There was only a hundred and fifteen.
In the month of March for West Bad Rouge.
For West Bad Rouge.
Okay.
And with that number there, all the drivers who were coached in the office, I actually showed them the video, they actually see what's going on behind the wheel, and that's, and I tell them, that's you, can't hide from it, so, con- continue doing what you're doing, but we're gonna, we coach them, there's not, nothing as far as determining drivers, it's just to make them more aware and more professional behind the wheel, and more safe. So, here in West Bad Rouge, excellent.
What can I add to that, um, a lot of his coaching is not dealing with speeding, it's not dealing with running red lights, it's dealing, it's just merely having a seatbelt on. And that's the vast majority, that's eight to ninety percent of our cultural offenses, that, that's the events, that's what we're talking about, so a lot of it is not really infractions on the roadway, it's just them merely, it, the video can't physically see the seatbelt, or they, they're wearing it improperly, it's on them, but it's improper. So, um, for the most part, West Bad Rouge is doing a phenomenal job, uh, can we be a lot more, a lot more improvement, of course, yeah, but that comes with the coaching, and we are seeing the improvements, week by week, to get less and less events happening.
I'll tell you that, I don't know if you've seen, I haven't seen yet, but it's, he does better than anyone I've ever seen, like, frankly, he does better than, you know, some of the companies as a whole, that have assisted for several years now, they can manage the stuff that goes in, so, that's pretty good job.
I just wanna be able to guarantee parents that their kids are gonna get home safely, they're gonna get to school safely, so the videos of kids standing while the bus, that's, the AI would catch that. And the doubling up and the tripling up, what causes, what, and what we found when we did our school visits, when we looked at their disciplines, they had their bus referral numbers go up, and I can see which schools get the bus double ups, because those are the Florida kids to a seat, and kids can't keep their hands off of each other. And it's just too, too many kids on the bus, and they're not in assigned seats when they're doubled up either, so that's, that's where a lot of the issues are coming from.
And to your point, yeah, we belabor this, but as we move in this new program, the, the, the incident reports, which are, I know from experience when I was a customer, um, are like out of the nineteen fifties, right, they're in triple kit, and they don't necessarily come in on time, a lot of times it's hard to read the writing, or maybe the student's names misspelled. That is all now gonna be in a digital platform, where that information is filled out, uh, within VP Connect, in a digital form, it'll be reviewed by the manager, and then it will be sent over. One of the luxuries of it is you folks will be, will be able to also determine level of incident, so for instance, on the day-to-day stuff, you may, as a superintendent, don't wanna know that, you know, Johnny wouldn't, you know, turned his head, or, you know, didn't listen to the driver, but you certainly wanna know if there was a physical incident on the bus. And we'll be able to set that up to pay yourself to know, hey, this was a level, this rose to this level, or it rose to a, a building, or it rose to this level.
Not all bus referrals would be the same.
No, exactly, here, and then, when, when we're having those conversations with you, and you wanna be able to access in general, right, uh, what do those reports look like, you'll be able to run a report, say, give me all the bus incident reports that were in this category or this category, so it'll be reportable for you. It also works for us in the reverse on situations too, like, I'm not necessarily saying it's here in, in, uh, you know, West Bad Rouge, but we have other districts where a lot of times there are a lot of video requests, and it's our job to help the district to understand, that, that takes a lot of, you know, huge manpower, person power to, to go, and, and, and what? So we'll, we'll be able to in turn say, hey, we're happy to pull the videos, but please note, you know, the, the town District A's Middle School has requested sixty-five videos in the last twenty days, that's taking a lot of our time, could we maybe work on that? So I think it really, the whole thing, the whole purpose of this program is to really help build a better relationship on both sides, and to give that visibility on both sides to understand better what's going on, so, you know, our team, our operations team will be able to look at that and say, okay, why has the driver on bus ten filled out eighty incident reports this month? We gotta do some coaching and say, you know, eighty percent of these didn't rise to the level of having to send it to the district, so that's what we wanna get to with, with, with all of our districts, you know, with you folks, is to, is to be, to come into the twenty-first century, quite honest with you, like, on the technology, so that it's, it's a value map, not a distraction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give on, uh, incidents that happened to accidents?
Nope, that's not me, that's not, that's not me.
In, in regards to the two accidents, I just wanna just throw this out there, just put that up front, we have been doing a job with no accidents at all, people, honestly.
I didn't say one, I was just wondering, two in one day.
Yeah, the first accident wasn't the bus driver's fault, we were not at fault, uh, it's unfortunate that some kids got injured, but we were not at fault.
That's great, you, you.
The second ans-, the, the second incident, it was just a careless, careless mistake from a veteran driver who really was totally upset about it, because she's never had an accident before. Um, there weren't that many kids on a bus, we tried to avoid it, um, we coached both, we actually still coached the other one anyways, just, you know, coaching means just having a talk with things that we probably should have done differently, if there was, if anything could be done differently, but the other one was coached in, in reference to that, that particular incident.
The very first one was unavoidable, the lady who contacted us was trying to get the sun, and then see if all the truck through, all the semi-trucks through, uh, and then the next thing you know.
That was the end, that was the end.
But that's like the, or it's almost like, that's the craziest thing you ever wanna hear on the sun, like, that's like, that's the worst, it's like, it just was the worst of things, and the lady, probably George Shaw, to that lady that was on that, even when she got, by not being able to, I'm not sure, right, I don't know what I'm on.
To assist the, the kids.
Turn the system.
Insurance programs.
Uh, oh, yeah, we passed that on to you a little bit. But, since Louisiana as a whole, and the claim rate incident as a whole in Louisiana, we could have never an incident or an accident for the rest of our company's lives, and, and they're not going to adjustments, that's just gonna be our one, because, because the, the facts are, the overall arching enemy is the billboard side, if you drive down the highway, and quite frankly, um, that's what they measure, and they measure it on payout per incident, per population, so, uh, they look at Louisiana, they look at payouts, and we'll do the payout numbers on the totals too, right, so that's really what happens, and so, we can't control that, even if we never have an incident, incident again in our lives, we can't control it, it's, it's outside, it's, it's an underwriter system that happens, it's just a level, unfortunately. I, I think, like, I don't know how you approach the government, or whatever, I'm happy, that's unfortunately out of our, I wish it wasn't.
Does everybody understand what legislation's doing right now, in regards to that?
Sure.
Keep tuned to it, because when that man comes back with a contract proposal, he's gonna separate the insurance, and you're gonna see an astronomical cost. And we, we, eventually, we can't continue.
I can tell you that, too, unfortunately, our price per unit, look, if I just looked at fifty states in general, we're about twenty-five hundred dollars or so, we're about ten thousand dollars.
In two thousand sixteen, it was thirteen hundred dollars to insure a bus, so it was ten thousand dollars, just in that short period, from thirteen hundred to ten thousand.
There you go, it's, it's, uh, you know, it, it, you know, it's, how do you do business in Louisiana, like, right, because I don't like, I'm gonna get that bill one way or the other, right, I can do it separately as an insurance, so your day rates, one of the two, but I gotta cover the note here today, because I have to pay that.
We just ultimately need to ensure that the drivers are there paid as well, because that, that affects the service, so, so.
Right now, we're paying insurance on a bus, we're sitting there.
I'm opening it up to the audience, if anyone has a question.
I will, I don't have a question.
We offer paid training.
I hope it's a blame.
I mean, the man, I'm just like the purple guy.
Anybody has a question?
Thank you, thank you.
If y'all know anybody who wants to be a bus driver, we do offer paid CDO training in-house.
Gotta have a plan for that. Attention, please, please. Gotta go baseball.
Got to go baseball.
Basically, it's all a bunch of a lot of budget items, you know, whether you're making the budget. Meals and snacks, we will do that. We have the parent family engagement, that information. Eligibility and recruitment, selection, enrollment, attendance. We look at early childhood, education in school readiness. And just to let y'all know, once a year, we get audited on this. Myself and Dr. Walker have been part of the team. We get questioned by the auditors from the federal government. The last time we got, got audited, a lady asked, what did you do, what do you do as a system to help that start? We had, we had an answer for her. So we just put a brand-new head start building, got a Ford Ellen elementary, Brule elementary, and we consolidated in with Kaneview, or that new campus that we had in the north area of the parish. That's when she said, thank you. That's what we expect from the school board or whoever have that part of head start, so what do you put into it? So that turned out very well for us, we had a good report. Questions, anybody? I can't answer. We have any questions from the audience, with a head start, anything? If y'all ready, I'll need to shoot you six minutes. All right, next agenda item is consideration request for approval of the monthly expenditures and financial reports for February twenty twenty-four, Jared.
I get the first report, I'll start with, like always, the sales tax report, that's on February two thousand twenty-four. As you can see, that was one of the months where we actually had sales taxes coming a little bit better at the end of the prior month, but, but a whole year we were down about seven percent. But compared to what we collected this fiscal year twenty twenty-three, it was kind of hard to expect the same dollars. The numbers are still good, we're still covering the budget on both the general fund, one cent sales tax and the one cent EFRD sales tax. I think, like I said, we shouldn't reach budget with everything. I know we really collected two of them at the end of, of June with everything, so you'll see where we get real close to the numbers by the end with everything, you get the timing issue of everything. I know if you look at it through eight months, we should be at about sixty-seven percent real flow of that, so that's, we're still turning in the right direction. Next report I have is the other funds report, fund balance report. This report will show you, as you can see now, we collected our second large property taxes with everything. So all of our funds, the growth report between the general fund, the EFRD, the two twelve mill property taxes, the only one that's down, it doesn't have a increase, they have the contingency fund, but it's still. The building fund is still making about thirteen, fourteen thousand a month with land, so that, that fund's grown over time too. As you can see, we have more revenue than what we had expenditures, which, so we're in a good situation right now. And I'll also show you all the budgets that actually is going to mirror the fund balance report, but it shows you how we've been coming in towards our budget. Everything should come in just about in line, I think expenditures might be a bit less than what the budget is, so we should have a good surplus across all of our funds for this fiscal year, ending in June thirty. And it'll show you between the EFRD fund, the general fund, and the two property tax funds that we have. We're pretty much close in property tax collection to what we budgeted, so I think we might get about maybe three more small checks in, but we should come in about a budget of property tax collection of the year. And the only one, like I said, we're down is the type of debt service, which is also time because when you pay out principal and interest payments during the year, that's normally, which was in February, which was due for March one. And in the last report, we did a financial report for February twenty twenty-four. That report was pretty much in line and, and last year, the only difference is you'll see on this report was when we had to pay the first principal and interest payment for the sales tax fund that we had. That's about the one big difference on the report. And with eight hundred and sixty-five thousand principal and along with a hundred and ninety thousand interest, that's where it'd be expensive, well, about a million dollars compared to last year. But other than, and if anybody has any other question, I'd definitely be glad to answer for you.
Any questions from the audience? Motion to accept, second by Sharita, Alden.
Alden.
Alden, they do. Okay, a little comment on that.
Mr. Fiskus?
Yes.
Miss Glott?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Dingerhorn?
Yes.
Ms. Bajron?
Yes.
Mr. Schloss?
Yes.
Next agenda item is, anybody have anything else? Okay, you've got a motion to adjourn, eight seconds, got it, I heard, all the favor?
Uh, what was going on tonight?